Alright guys, I got six o'clock. Let's start getting ready to go. Alright, six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges. Please be seated. Item two is the invocation for that, our friend Pastor Mike Lor. Welcome sir.
Shall we pray? Righteous and loving Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day you've given us. We thank you that you were with us in difficult times and that you give us so many good times throughout the year. We thank you for a wonderful holiday year, Father. And now as we face an unexpected future with COVID continuing to cause so many illnesses and so many people to have to change their plans and their lives, we just pray that you would be with us now. Help us through this time, Father, as a community. Give those who are taking care of the sick and those in need, an extra measure of strength and comfort during this time. Be with our schools and our teachers and so many closures and kids at school that normally aren't. Teachers that are struggling, Father, and all the staff, please help them to be able to find the resources they need to be able to get well soon. Just please help us all, Father, to get through this and to help each other and encourage each other as we go along. We pray especially that you would guard our leaders and keep them safe and healthy so they can continue to do the good work that they do, taking care of the needs of our community. I pray for all of the city council that you would bless each of them and their families. Watch over their health, Father. Watch over their lives. Help them as they make decisions along with all of the those who have positions in the city, Father, to make good decisions that will help and benefit all of the citizens here in Saginaw. Just bless them during this time. Be with those who are here to be able to speak about the things that pertain to them and help all things, Father. Be able to go according to your will. We thank you so much for loving us. We pray for your safety. We pray for strength. Be with our first responders and all of those who put their lives on the line to be able to protect all of us. Thank you for all things, Father, especially for your eternal son, Jesus, and in his holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Item three is our participation. If there is an agenda item that you would wish to speak on, please see the city secretary and she will set you up. You're allowed to speak on any item that is posted on the agenda. Also, and please silence your devices etc. So we do not have any disturbances. And if you have to take a call, please exit the chambers. Item four is the consent agenda. So I've got some requests here to pull F, G, H, and J. F, G, H, and J. So I will read the ones we'll take action on now. A action regarding minutes of January 4th, B action regarding building improvement grant from El Pacito LLC, C action regarding approval for Weaver and Tidwell to reform fiscal year 2021, that's 22 audit, D action regarding approval of American Communications to provide alerting and radio communications for the new fire station, E action regarding approval of furniture for the new fire station provided by Business Interiors of Irving. So we're skipping F, we're skipping G, we're skipping H. I action regarding purchase of one 2021 Chevy Colorado pickup truck from Public Service Department. So I will entertain a motion on A, B, C, D, E.
Mayor.
I, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agendas A, B, C, D, E, and I as presented.
Mr. Dr. Second. All of them, please raise your right hand. With the record in effect, we do have a quorum, a full house tonight. I appreciate everybody making it out tonight. So let's look at, first at F. F is action regarding interlocal agreement with Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District for first providing police services. For that, Chief Lee Howe.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annual contract that we go, enter into with EMS ISD, where the school district provides half the funding for three SRO officers and reimburses us partially for the salary of another supervision along with that, as well as providing four school crossing guards, or the positions of four school crossing guards for the year in those locations that are listed in the contract. This year, there was some slight increases due to salaries and otherwise the contract is the same as it was last year. There's one exception, the CARES Act funding that was reimbursed to the city last year. About nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars of that went toward reimbursing or offsetting salaries of police officers, including the SROs. That amount will be deducted from the billing that will be due from the school district. The contract runs through October, or September, I'm sorry, September 30th. You might would add too that the the school district is currently in the process of creating their own police department potentially. And if that happens, we will know more this summer, probably June or July, as to how quickly that will happen. But there is a possibility that at the expiration of this contract, that they will have in place some SROs to take the place of the three that we provide. So I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Counsel questions to Chief. Cindy?
Like you said, this is the same contract basically that we've seen year after year. And I don't know, I woke up in the middle of the night going like, whatever happens if there's overtime, how is that handled for these SROs?
Yeah, any overtime that's occurred, it still gets budgeted to the school district. There's always some variances from the actual amount that's calculated. But Kim just bills those monthly as to what's accrued. And that's, that's ends up being all that the school district pays is what they get billed for.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion for F.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item F, the interlocal agreement with Eagle Mountain School ISD.
I have a second. Cindy's second. All of the favors raised right here. Thank you guys. Thank you, Chief. Next is G, action regarding authorization of individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second Green Ribbon Grant that we've had in the last three years. This, of course, accepts the grant or authorizes the IPO to do design. The reason for pulling it is that we have a correction to make in the recommendation. You can see the financial impact is fifty-eight thousand and we put fifty-one thousand, five hundred and the recommendation should be corrected to read fifty-eight thousand for the not to exceed amount for the IPO. If you got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Counsel questions for Rick. Cindy?
So it's very vague on what it is they're really trying to do here. Just landscaping and things of this nature, is that correct?
It is correct. This, the landscaping that has previously been done on the Boulevard was done under Green Ribbon Grant. And for the last, well, we missed a year because of COVID. The state didn't put out the program. So what this will do, will do landscaping enhancements north of Mitten. So the plan is right now immediately north of Mitten and then also the median, which is now basically a gravel median in front of Walmart. So just on the north side of Bailey Boswell will be enhanced. But that's the plan. Again, it's capped at four hundred thousand. We really didn't know that until we got the grant. So that design may be tweaked. And we could, we're welcome to, or we can come back and give you a briefing on what that final plan will be. It will be led by the highway department and not us. So you will not see an award of contract. But you will see an AFA advanced funding agreement come through to allow that project to happen with the Texas dot letting schedule etc. Hopefully that answers your question.
Well, that one, yes. But the main concern I have is that, you know, we've watched landscaping along the roadways for several years now and they die pretty quickly. I don't know what the reason is. If we just don't have the proper infrastructure to water these plants, if there's leaching off the roads that's killing the plants. I just hate to see us spend more money on something that's just gonna die again.
Well, most of the money, the four hundred thousand is coming from the highway department, but it is public funds.
Well, we still pay that. It's not free.
The landscaping, the landscaping along the Boulevard now is essentially native plants, zero scape sorts of plantings. And so they're hardy to Texas environment. They're all irrigated. Of course, we've had some harsh weather in the last year. So they struggle. I was stating today in staff meeting, you know, part of the problem with those enhancements along the Boulevard is the railroad corridor is so overgrown and I think it takes away from those landscaped areas. But as we continue to receive these grants and do more improvements along the Boulevard, I think, you know, it will improve in the future. But again, they have proper irrigation and plantings that are, you know, designed to withstand Texas weather. So.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I'm just real concerned just because, you know, so much of what we planted the last couple of years is.
The improvements that are out there today are, I mean, we've done some minor replacements of plantings. You'd expect that. We did have a part of the irrigation system fail in the last two years. So, I mean, you know, those are just typical things that happen. And we have to agree with Texas dot formally to maintain those improvements. So, I mean, you know, we'll have to keep up the irrigation system and do maintenance on those bedding areas.
And what does that cost us, the upkeep on the irrigation system?
I don't have a dollar amount. In fact, I think we contract out the maintenance of those. I can come back to you with the MO to tell you what that is.
Now, how long is that stuff, the newer stuff, how long has that been in the ground? A couple, is it two years?
About three years ago. I'd say we, maybe a little over two, but between two and three. And like I say, the Green Ribbon Grant kinda went into dormancy because of COVID and then it's come back this year.
I really like the idea that we're trying to put zero scape, zero scape planting, plants out along the roadway. But, you know, those aren't always the most beautiful, but they do survive.
Beauty's in the eye of the beholder, I guess.
It looks better than it used to. Looks a little bit better than it used to with that. You can definitely tell that landscaping makes a difference.
While they are native plants, they're not native to zero degree weather. So we lost a lot. Not just, not just the native ones, but just all around and neighborhoods and around the city. So not much survived.
But you know, hardscapes are pretty too, with no plants and just hard stuff. It's pretty.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions on G? Item G. Any other questions for Rick? If not, I'll entertain a motion for G.
Mayor, I move that we approve the actions regarding the authorization of an individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for the 2021 Saginaw Boulevard beautification.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you folks. Next is eight, action regarding authorization of contract agreement and deposit for 2022 4th of July fireworks. Again, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. This has become an annual event. This, this action requires us to, with a vendor actually, who has done the fireworks displays in the past, including last year, requires us to put a fifty percent deposit down to secure that date, which is the Saturday before July 4th, for this fireworks display. Typically, we get a recommendation from the park board and then come to council with the recommendation. This, because of the deadline, we had to go ahead and expedite that. But we did have the park board meeting last night and they unanimously recommended that we go forward with this action. So.
And the president of the parks board is here and he can speak if he has any concerns. So.
I believe we have a quorum of the park board here tonight. So we can just go ahead and have, go ahead and have a meeting if we needed to.
Is it gonna be a little bit bigger than last year? Cause every year you gotta get a little bit bigger, you know?
I think it's about the same.
About the same amount of money.
I think so, yeah.
That was one of the questions I had reading through the contract. It doesn't say how long this show is. Twenty-five minutes?
Pretty close.
Very respectable, yeah.
Oh, it is. I have no doubt about that.
The best place to see it is in the CVS parking lot, just so y'all know. Don't everybody go there.
Don't tell people that. Everybody's gonna be there. And the second thing I noticed that the contract talks about, you know, if the city cancels, if the city delays, if the city this, city that, city that, with all the problems that we're having trying to get things in from China, which I imagine where most of our fireworks are gonna come from, if they're not able to produce the show, I don't see anything in the contract that talks about what we're gonna be reimbursed in that event. Do we have to, I saw we have a February 5 date on this. So can we find out about that? And, I mean, I know we have to sign it tonight, but can we find out before we turn it over to them, what that is? And we've used them before?
It's the same company as last time, right?
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions on H? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve action regarding authorization of the contract agreement and deposit for the 2022 4th of July fireworks display.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor.
I'll second.
Mr. Beasley's second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, folks. That's H. Last item J, action regarding construction of an awning for the Fleet Maintenance Center. Rick Trice, show.
Yes, this was an item that was budgeted in this fiscal year. We had the fleet, maintenance, the garage, and they're located in the Public Works facility. That facility faces to the southwest, receives harsh sun. There are times when the bins are all filled. And so if, you know, if you had minor maintenance opportunities or just to park vehicles in a queue waiting to get into the bins, then that will keep them in the shade protected and also help with the sun and the heat that that building receives. It's, the building is not air conditioned. It's heated, but it doesn't have air conditioning. So that'll help with that solar gain.
Questions for Rick?
Yes, sir. Again, I was looking over the bids that you have here and the G and R handyman service is who we selected. And I noticed that these, in their bid, they said all workmanship is warranted for five years. Does that include materials?
I don't know that it does, but city contracts only have a two-year maintenance bond. So, you know, that's a warranty that would go beyond what we would typically get even on a street project.
And is that a hundred percent warranty on their work? I mean, I was just, I mean, it's a really vague statement.
It is.
And I just, I was just curious what they meant by that.
Yeah, again, I can, we can follow up with the vendor to see. And if you wanna, if you wanna continue this, we can, but we need clarification on what is warranty is. To me, a warranty is a warranty. So I guess we could argue about it, but would include workmanship and materials.
Have they done work for us before?
They have not.
And it says the project will take no longer than fourteen days. If it takes twenty-five, what happens? It just takes twenty-five days?
You know, we don't have damages on this, on this contract. So I mean, if it lasts, if it takes longer, it would just take longer. I mean, you know, there's weather conditions that can affect progress of work, etc., etc. So.
I just, this day and age, I just like contracts to have a little more detail in them.
I understand.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for item J? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve action regarding the construction of the awning for the Fleet Maintenance Center.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Rick. Any other questions for Rick? I'm just kidding.
You got another shot at me later, Scotty.
We will. Alright, item five, presentation of annual comprehensive financial report. Our friends at Weaver and Tidwell. Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy to be here tonight to present the results of the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021. So we're already halfway through fiscal year 22, but here for this one. You all received the final bound copy of the report itself, a very large document. But within it, you will find my opinion or the opinion of the audit itself. And within that is our responsibility as the audit firm, as well as management's responsibility. And it goes through to talk, talk through that. But the most important portion of that, which is on page three of the financial statements, is the opinion. The opinion states that this is an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements. So that's what you want to see when you have an audit. So great job. I'm gonna briefly go through the fund, fund level highlights. So I'll take you all to page, let's see, 24. That includes the general fund, the debt service fund, the capital projects fund, and then all other governmental funds. And the governmental funds are gonna be anything outside of your water and sewer, so utility billing services. You all note that there was an ending fund balance of forty-six million. That's an increase of one point, almost one point eight over the prior year. The majority of that is a split between increases in the capital projects fund. And that's because you all issued debt in the previous year. And so some of that was still within the project, the capital projects fund as of fiscal year end, combined with the other governmental funds, which had a one point seven increase. And then the general fund came down a little bit at almost a million dollars. So across the board, overall an increase though, and which is really good, especially with the year that we, you know, had with fiscal year 21, across the board with all of our cities, struggling between receiving in federal funding, not knowing what to do with that federal funding, you know, just came to your doorstep, but you weren't really sure what we're gonna do with it. So cities that did have a significant increase, that was mostly due to them utilizing that federal funding in fiscal year 21. So since you all did not use that, overall really great year. Moving on to the enterprise fund, and again, that's going to be your water and sewer fund. So if you look at page 29, you'll note that net position ended at thirty-seven point, almost three. And that was an increase or change of a little over five hundred thousand dollars over the previous year. And so overall increases in both your governmental activities as well as your enterprise activities. There were no findings that we noted during the course of the audit, no audit adjustments and no past adjustments. So overall, really good year. Kim isn't here. But I would like to point out that Kim does a significant amount of work prior to us coming out for the audit. Everything is always very organized for us, which we really appreciate, considering she's doing a lot of the work by herself. It's, it's really great to have her and have everything so organized and be able to present the audit and not have it drag out like some of our other cities. So I do wanna acknowledge her, even though she's not here, because we really do appreciate all the work that she puts in. You know, not only during the audit time, but, you know, over the course of the fiscal year. If there are any issues that come up, she always, you know, reaches out and if she has questions, which is, which is good. So.
I know, I know it's killing Kim not to be here and she's probably watching. So Kim, thank you very much. It is, the reason why our books are in such great order is a large part due to Kim Quinn. So we have to, unfortunately, she's not here, but she's here in spirit.
With that, I'll turn it over to you all. Keep it pretty brief. But if you have any questions about any of the information within this statement, it's happy to go through that.
Counsel, any questions? You good? Alright. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And again, kudos to Kim Quinn. This is, this is her doing very much so. So we really appreciate it.
She's a good asset to our city.
Alright, that's, that's fine. Alright, I'm gonna go off script real quick because I forgot something at the beginning of council meeting. We have some very important young men in the back row. I wanna say hi to them. We have a bunch of scouts here tonight. Will you gentlemen stand up? Appreciate y'all coming out. Welcome. We can answer any questions. I hope you enjoy this. Enjoy. I hope it's not too painful for y'all. Appreciate y'all coming out. So thank y'all very much, gentlemen. Brandon, am I getting, am I getting in trouble for that, Brandon? Am I gonna go to prison for that one? Okay. Hope it's something good. Alright. Item six, consideration action regarding ordinance 2021, that's one, appointment of municipal court judge and associate judges. It says Kim Quinn, but it's actually the judge. Judge Erby, come on up. Welcome.
Mayor, counsel, my name is Lorraine Erby. I've been the Saginaw Municipal Court Judge for, I just passed my 10th anniversary last week. So I love being here. I was told the other day that there was a couple of questions. So I was gonna address those questions really quickly and then open it up if you guys have questions outside of these.
You wanna just give us a quick overview of sort of what you do? We've got some new folks here that may be not familiar with what you do. Yeah.
Day in the life. So my job works into pretty much three facets. Everyone knows judge goes to court. So we have court here two days a month. One day is we do everything. We do our initial appearances. We do every docket you can imagine except our prosecutor docket and our trials. So we start at nine in the morning and go till about five. And we did that years ago. I don't know if anybody remembers when they tore down City Hall. We moved temporarily into the rec center. And it was hard to tear up the rec center once a month as it was. So we just said, you know what, we'll just do everything in one day. And it worked so well, we just marathon it. The other day is a prosecutor docket. That has been modified with COVID. So now the prosecutor takes the courtroom and I hide in the mayor's office until they need me. And then we have trials four times a year. So we have jury trials twice, twice a year, bench trials twice a year. Second facet is jail and police stuff. So that has changed. Pre-COVID, I was in jail every day if they needed me. Post-COVID going on, a lot has changed with Tarrant County. So we do it virtually. So I do, they send me all the paperwork in the morning. I review it. I send it back to the jail. Our inmates are transferred to county. People with Class C tickets are given personal bonds and released from jail and to return to court. So that was something that we started before COVID, doing personal bonds instead of making people bond out on their Class C offenses. So jail work, I go as I'm needed. Third facet is warrants, and warrants are pretty much a twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven job. So there's the day-to-day stuff, when they call and say, hey, we've got arrest warrants, so I'll run to the police department or they'll find me. I do search warrants and blood search warrants electronically, so they email them to me, and we're able to do them all electronically, so they don't have to drive to me, I don't have to drive to them. So a a day in my life generally starts about five in the morning, and I could be woken back up again throughout the night and, or maybe not at all. So that's kind of a day in the life. We started making some changes in municipal court a few years ago, when we started looking at some of the indigency problems, so. And then the legislature caught up, and there's been a lot of changes, so in short, what we had to do is by law, when somebody gets a ticket, it used to be if they didn't come to court by that little date on the bottom of their ticket. We have an initial, we send out a notice of a court date, and often, there's eighty or a hundred people or more that have never done anything with their ticket during a, usually it's a thirty-day period. And we have to call their names and maybe ten percent show up. So that's, that's part of what we do on that really super long day, is those non-appearance dockets, too. So we started working through the financials of it all and trying to figure out how we could best serve the people. So we've really expanded what we can do with indigent people, community service. This addresses one of the questions that I got, is do I just make everybody pay a fine, or do I have community service options? I have a little bit of both. I I don't just make anybody pay a fine, I'm going to tell you that most of the people either go to the window or come to court, they just want deferred, and they're, they pay it and they're done, and and everything's cool. I do have a a cluster that I will have, and they're just, they're being hit hard. So most of those, I'll send to go do a payment plan, and they go and do a formal payment plan, fill out paperwork. If they might be indigent, they come back to me for a hearing. And then I have a few that get in there, and you know, they'll just start talking, and I can just feel it welling up in my throat, how hard they've been having it. So I'll just kind of clear the courtroom and see them right then and there and work out community service, waiver of fines, so anybody that might be indigent, I've got lots of options, so. That's kind of my job in a nutshell. One of the questions I got was, has there been any complaints about me or our judicial system? I asked, I've been told no. I'm sure there's people that don't love some of my policies, so, but most people are fine with them. So the one I hear a little bit of gruff is when somebody's supposed to do defensive driving, and they have ninety days to do their defensive driving, and they do not do their defensive driving. I don't do extensions, because I've heard everything from dead family members to I just didn't get to it, and how do you pick and choose? So I drew a bright line years ago, I don't consider that to be a really big problem. My alternates barely get to serve. When I travel is the only time somebody might help me out in the jail. So, and that's only if I'm traveling internationally or out of state. So I've gotten to go on a few vacations in the past couple of years, and I just bring my tablet with me and wake up and do my jail stuff and send it back, and they're just on call. I think I kind of caught the second one, I'd like to, some data on how I run the court, I don't know if I've fully addressed that, but that's pretty much, we have a docket every hour on that super long day. So we start off and just every hour is a docket, we end it, move on to the next one. I highly encourage, if anyone ever just wants a super fun Thursday, we usually meet for that long docket on the third Thursday of the month. And you could just come in for an hour, and just come and sit and watch and kind of see the interaction and the talk, and sometimes people get a little crazy, but that makes it just a little bit more fun. A little bit about me, and then I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Like I said, I've been here ten years, I've been in San Haltem City for thirteen years. I have a law firm with my daughter, and if I'm going to be real honest, it's mostly my daughter's law firm, and I get to go have a desk and work a couple of days a week. And my nest got really empty really quick when she was in high school, so I just, I filled it with all these little things that are just too much fun, so that's me. Any questions?
Counsel, questions? Yes, Mary.
Did I understand you correctly that ninety percent of people don't show up? Isn't that what you said?
That's the non-appearance docket, so let's, let's just do it, and I don't know how many tickets are issued each month, but I like round numbers, because I'm a lawyer and we don't do math. Let's say a thousand people get tickets during a month. And let's say five hundred of them come to court, set hearings, do whatever, and that leaves five hundred people that never do anything at all. We send out those non-appearance letters, and I don't care, and we do it in Haltem, my docket's huge in Haltem, it doesn't matter how many people are on there, I get ten percent appearance on those non-appearance dockets. So that's, most people come to court and take care of their stuff, I don't know what the average is of who doesn't, but I know when I have those hearings, it's ten percent.
So the people that don't show up, then those are the people that if they get pulled over, then the policeman checks and sees?
Yes, they would, they would get arrested, they could get arrested, they don't always, sometimes, but let's say they get arrested, they would get a personal bond, get a court date to come back and see me, and we work through it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, other questions? Other question for the judge?
Um, all my questions have been answered, so.
I made lots of notes.
No, excellent.
Just in case.
Any other questions, folks? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate your time. All right, so we have an ordinance, I will entertain a motion for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash one.
Mayor, I make a motion that we pass the consideration in action regarding ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash one, as presented.
All those favors are in hand? Excellent, thank you, Judge. All right, item number, we're on seven.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Is it?
It's two different things?
Okay. There's a appointee ordinance and a judge ordinance, a judge agreement, okay.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the municipal judge agreement, as presented.
Got a second? Mr. Tucker, all those favors are in hand? Excellent. Is that good? Thank you, Janice, thank you, Judge. All right. It takes a village. All right, uh, next is item number, I think we're seven?
Seven.
Yeah. Consideration regarding agreement between city Saginaw and Community Link Commission. For that, we have Whitney Berry. Whitney, welcome.
All right, hi, I'm Whitney, for those that don't know me. I'm the farmer's market coordinator, I work at Community Link. I may really to answer any questions that you guys have, I've answered some questions throughout the week, and we sent our contract for renewal and everything like that, we do have a lower budget this year, just a little bit lower, a thousand dollars. Just last year with COVID and everything, we didn't really fully use the budget, so lowered it a little bit, but left some room to add some more entertainment and things like that. But any questions that you guys have that I could answer, I'm here for?
Yeah, appreciate your answer, and I saw the email, appreciate all your responses, very quick responses, that was awesome. So what other questions does counsel have that were not addressed via email? Cindy?
First of all, I want to commend the Christmas market, that was absolutely amazing. And I know that we can fill that market area every weekend that we're open, that would be great to be able to do that. People are still talking about it, they talk to me all the time, they're like, wow, we got to do that every weekend, I said, okay, well, I'll pass that along.
We'll try. We'll try, there's a lot of logistics behind it, to get, I mean, imagine, just all those people in the same place at the same time, that's always hard whenever it comes to anything like that. And just try, just to limit the amount of same vendors, because a lot of them, because we just kind of opened it up to whoever would come, we did have, oh my gosh, we had maybe ten different vendors that sold tumblers. So it kind of dilutes the market and that, and just kind of gets oversaturated, and then the vendors that do have that don't sell good, because it is kind of an oversurplus of their items. Um, yeah, I'm always open to new vendors, and adding a couple more of the popular items that maybe sell out a little bit quickly, so they have maybe a backup option, or just allowing somebody new to come in.
Okay. And the other thick comment that I have is when I was at the farmer, I mean, at the Christmas market, it was windy that day, kind of like, not as bad as what we had on Saturday, but it was still windy. And I saw one of the canopies, the wind picked it up and whacked some guy in the head, but he was okay. But we do have the cert organization, they serve the volunteer, or they, they're volunteer service for the fire department. And they would be more than happy to come out and, you know, give them a booth, we could offer rehab, you know, in the summertime when it's really hot, they could have cool drinks, a place to cool down. Find a first aid if, you know, the gentleman had gotten a cut on his head type of thing, and then save on some of our police and fire resources that show up.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea, too, just have that as a community resource, too, so people can see that, know that's there, find out more about it, too. I've seen little kids, I mean, of course, little kids, but they run around and fall, something like that, just to have kind of first aiders, anything there accessible to the public.
And, you know, we we would love to be able to help out, so if you would reach out to, I guess you could contact Chief Craver. You could get in touch with them and get ready for the new season coming up. I think it would be a huge benefit, and also offer a lot of advertisement to cert.
Good idea, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counsel, other questions for Whitney? Oh, Mary, go ahead.
Excuse me, not a question, I just wanted to commend Community Link for doing such a great job with the farmer's market and introducing new activities and, you know, new vendors and make, you know, making improvements all the time. I really enjoy it, and I know it really puts Saginaw out there and kind of makes a name for us and gets us, you know, good PR, so.
Right, definitely.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
So what's three things that, or a couple of things that we need to do that could could really help the farmer's market? Policies or whatever we, you know, if the council, what would you like to see changed or?
The big thing is trying to get entertainment there, and a lot of it is there's not like a sound set up for it, to just be able to say, hey, this person could come play or sing, or even like, I tried to get one of the church choirs to come out for the Christmas thing, so just to have something set up, PAs, speakers set up, something like that, that would, that would be really helpful to have. Another thing, just early in the morning, I was afraid of the lights are always off when we get there really early in the morning and it's dark, it'd be good just to have those on, just for a safety thing when I get there. And just getting more word out in other places that we can have anything that's city-related, to have just advertisement of the farmer's market, so so many people tell me all the time that they didn't know that it was there, it was their first time coming, we do get a lot of regular people, I see the same people every time we have the market, but just to increase new people coming, and that would help the vendors, it'd help everything, kind of increase the capacity.
It's, I'm not, is somebody actually documenting this, so we can make sure these, there's definitely the lights on, that should be something pretty easy. That's low hanging fruit there. I'm looking at it.
Mr. Mayor, I had one comment, I believe the Parks Board may have discussed a potential expansion, you'll recall, we purchased property to the immediate west of the farmer's market. I think that given the success of the market, if we added another pavilion or multiple structures, they would be well-used, so. I I think, and I'm seeing heads nod, I believe those are discussions the Parks Board have had, and will make recommendations to city council.
I I will say that during the Christmas thing, which we really had, and we was out there watching the light, the great big one, I was actually, well, where did that band go, or why, why haven't we got the band out here playing music, so I, that definitely.
I tried to see. That's not a Community Link show, that was, that was the city.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I I'm I'm making a relation to, absolutely, I could see music being a, being a good thing.
And just having that set up, so I can invite more people, bands, things like that, having a PA, they'll be more likely to come and not have to bring all their equipment, and kind of open that up.
Appreciate it.
So I want to say thank you as well for all of your hard work and everything you're doing up there, I think it's, it's been great for Saginaw, and that's, that's a good thing. And the second thing is, is I don't know if we ever talked about having like a Christmas in July, or we can do that big, that big Christmas event like two times a year or something like that?
Oh, yeah, I would like that, that would be cool to have, just to have another event where it does increase, I found some new vendors with that, too, just to see their products and everything, so I'd be definitely interested in that.
Yeah, I think that's something we should look at.
Do we, I I know I'd, I I've heard through the ether that some of the, some, some of the groups are having, or some of the vendors having a hard time making it financially work with, within their. Some of the vendors say that, like, definitely food or vegetables, things like that, are we looking at prorating or something, I I don't know if there's been any analysis done about, I definitely know we charge a fee more so to make sure they have skin in the game and they're going to come. But for like, say, small vendors is doing vegetables and stuff, and they're having a hard time, you know, justifying coming out there, are we looking at some sliding scale or something to, to help encourage that?
Um, we've looked into incentivizing farmers that would come, the farmers and really almost all the vendors that come there are very profitable, especially our farmers, our farmers sell almost all of their stuff out, so it is profitable to be there. The other farmers, big farmers that there are really in the area, are kind of spoken for at their markets, I've tried to talk to them and establish relationships to get them to come in, and I think incentivizing, say, hey, we'll pay you whatever, just twenty dollars, four dollars, waive the fee, anything, just to get them to come and have that first experience at a market, I think they would continue to come back, because it would be profitable for them.
Appreciate it.
Cindy?
And I'm glad you mentioned about Christmas in July, it reminded me, I was in Atlanta in the fall, and, well, outside of Atlanta, and they had a night market, you know, once every quarter, and we just happened to be there the weekend that they had it, and basically, it was, you know, food trucks and food vendors, you know, selling pastries and drinks and things, but they also had activities for families, and it was a family night type thing, it was a lot of fun, you know, they had bands playing and things of that nature, that might be something to consider as well.
Yeah, I think that would be good, especially in the summer when it is hotter, you know, to have maybe one a week, when the kids are out of school, too, to kind of make it an event for everybody to be able to come to, games, whatever it is, I'm open to all creative ideas, just to have more people know about the market, get out there, meet our vendors, our vendors are always open to talking to people and giving them the information that they have as well.
Yeah, that was, that was a good time, so.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Other questions, comments, counsel? One other thing I just thought, we need to make sure where everybody's clear on, you know, this money comes, that we're paid for this, comes out of the hotel motel tax. So, and I'm trying to remember how much is in that account, but it's plenty to cover this, I don't know the full number, so that's just another piece of information for this agreement. And this agreement is for the calendar year twenty-two, right? It's not, it's not our budget year, it's the calendar year, so that's another important differentiation, okay. Uh, other questions for, for Community Link, for Whitney? Anything else? No, we appreciate it, appreciate your hard work, it's really getting better and better, and I'm, I get nothing but positive comments on the, on the farmer's market, it's one of the, it's exceeded my expectations, so it really has, especially since we launched in the middle of COVID, so it's done really, really well, and I'm, I'm pleased that we're moving forward with it. I think we're done with you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, okay.
I did bring up the item last year about the cottage food laws, and I know you brought the county out and they checked, but I double-checked with the county, and they said all they check for are permits. And I still see some of your vendors out there that are not in compliance with the Texas state cottage food laws. So I think we need to check into that, especially since you have that on your application, and we need to get those people in compliance, you know, once again, botulism is a very deadly thing, we don't need the other pathogens, because they're also quite harmful and make people very ill. But, yeah, there's, there's still a few vendors out there.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, put one of your Parks Board members on the spot, she's a health inspector, do you want to speak to that?
Katie, Katie, come up to the, please. Expert witness.
So cottage food is not, we're not allowed to permit it, they're not, the state has said we cannot enforce anything on it.
Your, your county, right?
I'm city.
City, right.
But the state and the Texas cottage food law, there are certain things that they cannot do, and if they're going to do certain things like canning and items like that, they have to meet certain pH requirements that they send to the state to get approved. But all they're required to do, if they're doing cakes, cookies, stuff like that, is put a label on that says this is made in a non-inspected facility.
Well, and several of those people that do canning and things like, do not have those labels on there.
Unfortunately, there's no enforcement action on a state, on a county level or a city level. The state and the legislature, when they made the rules, put no enforcement action for us.
Really?
Really.
But they expect you to follow those?
They tell them they have to get food handler training, they tell them that they have to have those labels, but we cannot do any enforcement, and I have FAQ stuff on that, if you want me to send it to you, that we hand out to people when they ask. Because we, we have two farmer's markets in Irving, we, we deal with them. A fair amount of, of the time, there are certain things we're not allowed to do. A fair amount of of the time. There are certain things we're not allowed to do, but it just depends on what it is.
Well, as a master food preserver, you know, everybody that I teach, we have to talk about cottage food laws. We have to tell them that they need to be compliant with cottage food laws.
Yeah, unfortunately, they gave us no enforcement action on it.
If you could send us that, those FAQs, that'd be awesome, that would help.
Yeah, I can email them to you.
Please, you can share that, that'd be great.
We have them, I mean, we we go through this all the time, but they can't do what we call TCS foods, time temperature control for safety. Used to be called PHF, they can't do those, so no pumpkin pies, no cheesecake, things like that. But they can do pickles and they can do things like that. It sometimes with the salsas and sauces, there are certain pH levels they have to meet and it says what they need to do. Whether or not they do it, our hands have basically been tied.
Right.
And that's at the state level, so we're trying.
I do know that I'm looking for certain things on the containers and if they're not there, I just walk on, I don't ever.
If they're not there, honestly, all we can do is make a note of it and and tell them, hey, you should have this, but we're kind of stuck as well. So.
Wow.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it, thanks for the information. We got experts all over Saginaw, all right. So any other questions for for Whitney and the Community Link folks? Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the action regarding the agreement between City of Saginaw and Community Link Mission for the operation and promotion of the farmer's market at Saginaw Switchyard for twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
If they're all second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you, guys. Thank you, Community Link, appreciate it. Item number eight, considering action regarding award of contract for Belt Mill Pump Station for the Rick Try Show.
Thank you again, Mayor. Well, I just can't clear my throat. Uh, you'll recall, last five or six months, we've been talking about Belt Mill and the and the need for a pump station to provide adequate fire protection for multi-story buildings in that development. Uh, this is the award of contract to to build the pump station. Uh, we received bids last week, uh, you can see the the amount of the contract. Uh, really, we're we're pushing this project along because in addition to other multi-story developments that will occur in Belt Mill, uh, you'll recall that we approved the the final plan for the grand multifamily project in there and and that is uh under construction, so we're trying to hit a, an August, uh, twenty-twenty-two delivery date for this project to allow them to get their CO as soon as possible. So if you got any specific questions about the project, we'd be glad to try to answer those.
Can we have a little, a little of the background on this, isn't this necessary because we asked Fort Worth to hook into their water line and they said no?
It's ne- it's necessary because when we looked at the Jarvis Pump Station and the elevation there and the terrain of Belt Mill, uh, we found out that we didn't have adequate pressure uh to to serve a a three-story facility on 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 Belt Mill. So, you know, pressure is a function of either either pumps in the system or elevation.
Hmm.
So the elevation of the water uh in the tank versus the terrain uh would not meet the pressures required to provide fire protection on on a thir- three-story building. So we did approach Fort Worth to see if if we could tap on to their their pressure plane. Uh, they had some really good valid reasons why they denied us, so so we went forward with this pump station concept. One of the things that we showed you, if you remember, the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee uh had a report about, you know, our our fund balance and the inter- in the uh impact fee fund balance. And so one of the strategies was to try to get reimbursement, so that we will be seeking reimbursements for the turds that was created in Belt Mill for the cost of this improvement, so.
And how long do we think it'll anticipate before we get money from that turd? It's going to be a couple of years, right?
Yeah, a couple of years and I I might just add uh one item to Rick's explanation. So the council approved an agreement uh where we will receive four point six acres of land from the developer as a condition of completing this public improvement, so that four point six acres will become city property uh for a future facility or future public use.
Isn't that four point six acres also where the pump station's going to go?
No, separate.
Yeah, the pump station will be located on the east side of Belt Mill. Belt Mill is the project that just recently got paved, the north-south collector that you see right from Bailey Boswell. So uh the the pump station will be just off that roadway, but it it's a small footprint, it's like a single-family footprint, it's it's very small.
All right, council questions? Questions for Rick? Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the award of contract for Belt Mill Pump Station to frame our construction as presented.
Do I have a second? Cheryl, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys, thank you, Rick, appreciate it. Next is item number nine, executive session, so pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-to-oh-seven-four Personnel Matters. We will adjourn into executive session at six fifty-six, we will return to adjourn.
So we'll come back to Jack, I don't want to forget the jack. I'm a little. I know, I forgot mine had turned around and come back because it was raining outside, or whatever last night.
You gotta stop pushing your chairs. Huh? You gotta stop pushing your chairs.
Whoop, that's exercise for you, I'm fucking, look at this.
Change for?
Thanks for staying late guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I just gotta get up in five hours.
We got a big video game tomorrow.
Oh good. Who won?
That's you. He's pretty handy.
If y'all come on, I'll make a motion.
I know.
And I'll second it.
You just need four of us, one, two, three, four.
Alright, so at nine sixteen, we're back in regular session.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All those in favor? At nine seventeen, we adjourn. Thank you guys. Thank you, guys.